Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Thursday night of our 2025 Capsule Staff Retreat. And welcome to our new room. This is, we just finished that up this week. So thanks to Jay Heatherly and Allison and Brian and the team who put this together. They get great use of this space. For those who have not been in this space, part of this space were offices on the back hallway. And then also was a large workroom that we had when the city clerk's office was up here. So we took it and converted it into this nice training room, meeting room for community development and primarily community development and Tom's team, but also anybody else that needs it. So good space here. So glad to be up. So our retreat tonight, or this tonight and tomorrow is charting the course is our theme for this year. Coming out of Hurricane Helene. So we're charting the course for the next, you know, 18 to 24 months. You'll hear me talk a lot over the next day or so, day and a couple of hours about focusing on recovery and really taking the time to, to take advantage of make lemonade out of lemons, right? From the hurricane and what we're doing and how we're going to get council fully up to speed on our recovery and how we're going to return to pre-conditions, but also be move forward with some of your initiatives using the storm as the backdrop. So we'll talk about it next couple of days. I have to get it to Brian and the budget team. They've got to put together a great retreat for you tonight and tomorrow. So it'll be, hopefully it'll be exciting, especially as we go through numbers tonight. For Regina and Melinda, you will tonight, just to prepare you, you can get lots of numbers. We hopefully will be able to keep you awake. I know Adam will, I know Adam's ready for that. So Adam and Jimmy, but no, lots of numbers to kind of lay the foundation for tomorrow. I will remind you of your homework for tomorrow. I've sent it out in the hair. If you've not thought about why you ran, what's important to you, one will lead us to that tomorrow morning, first thing, just as an icebreaker for all of us. So this, so look forward. We have guaranteed that the mayor would be home by 8:30 for her next meeting. So always on the go. So we will, we will be out of here. We all have time to do that. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Brian and the budget team and we'll get started.
Sure. Thanks, Sean. So just a quick agenda for this evening. We will start kind of setting the stage from up into Hurricane Helene and give y'all a deep review of what's happened since the storm. We'll do a deeper dive in the auditors as typical for our retreats. Just give you a free financial overview from FY24 audit. Discuss economic trends and market factors impacting our upcoming budget. Do a deep dive on compensation and then it's like we normally do this evening. Asset stage on where we are from a compensation standpoint. And then close it out with some visioning for tomorrow. Again, tomorrow we'll focus on team building. We'll talk about our strategic plan. We'll talk about the lean for a good bit tomorrow. Talk about prioritization, how we build capacity as an organization. We will talk about general obligation bonds, referendum and the pool at Whitmire project tomorrow as well. Some break for lunch and we'll have to talk about some accomplishments. So for tonight, really, we want to talk about the lean, review the recovery efforts and our next steps. Give you a quick understanding of the financial position we're at currently based on FY24. Do the compensation overview and set groundwork for Brian. So just to start, you know, setting the stage from, from the hurricane. So early morning, almost every dam in western Carolina burst. The number two dam on the Big Hungry River in Henderson County was one of the only few left standing. The Rocky Broad River, Green River, Mills River, Big Hungry River, Infringe Broad with all their tributaries overflowed their banks in a torrent of raging water throughout the county. Houses washed away, mountains sliced and old townspeople, all bridges, train trucks washed away. All communication between Henderson County and outside world was cut off. And central Henderson County, the swamp or bog turned into a huge lake. Town of Hendersonville was an island surrounded by water on all sides and people in town had no way to run. Can you guess which flood this is from? Yeah, this is 1960. That's very similar to what we experienced today. We've got a lot of good historical information that we'll, we'll provide with you all as we go through the night as well.
It's actually kind of eerie that it's so similar to what we experienced, right? And I will point out, don't want just to go in there, our budget team is wearing hurricane shirts. You know, representative of Hurricane Helene. They're, they're dressed out.
Donnie will wow attendees without a hint for a second here in a row tomorrow. I mean, we've got a whole newspaper. So what's next? You know, the hurricane, right? And it's been four months since its impact. We're going to give you a brief overview, try to set the stage for tomorrow's discussion. We're going to talk about insurance, what's been going on there, the S and P credit watch that occurred, FEMA and their public assistance process, other grants and loans that are out there. And then how this impacts what we do planning for the future. So on the insurance side, cities, insurance coverage in the lead municipalities. We have a $5 million catastrophic coverage, $5 million being the maximum. That does cover wind and flood, and those are the two areas that we have submitted for, for insurance coverage here. Based on the nature of the storm, they did give us a one and a half million dollar advance to help us with cash flow, which was extremely appreciated with that partnership. And we estimate there is around two to two and a half million left. So potentially four million. I think there's some projects that we're going to be discussing with our providers to try to get additional coverage for, and we might max out the $5 million catastrophic coverage policy. But they are close to finalizing that. We have already received all of our insurance proceeds for vehicle damage. That's under a different policy. On the right is just an example of what you can see. We're going to have very detailed, very large payment report that's going to detail everything about our damages. I got to appreciate even resources and Steve Oliverson for getting out on the ground. I think probably two days in, he was out in the community documenting damages and reporting them with our insurance adjuster. We're very early in this process. We, we got an insurance adjuster after very fast compared to other communities. So the credit watch, so S and P holds a credit to Hendersonville for our limited obligation bond issuances. And so anyone in the disaster impacted area who has credit with S and P was put on a credit watch with a negative outlook. And this occurred in November, well, actually October 17th. So very shortly after the storm, we got hit with a credit watch. So we had to meet with S and P staff, their analysts a few times and explain how our recovery was going, what it looked like for us. And then they brought that back to the board at S and P that then made a decision on all the credits in the region. Luckily for us, we received an outlook of stable and we're taken off the credit watch, which is excellent. They stated it was based on the limited impact on the overall tax base and financial performance. Furthermore, believe the city's proactive management, budget flexibility, coupled with expected reimbursement from state and FEMA will allow it to incorporate the immediate medium term cost burden of rebuilding and repairs without materially deteriorating credit quality. So our neighbors weren't as lucky as in Henderson County well with this. We've, we got out a stable outlook. Our neighbors to the north had a negative outlook still based on S and P review. And that will undoubtedly have an impact on how their recovery proceeds.
A little cope, you know, little in and for all. I think this is, we went through it, we came out pretty good. Well, it came out very well compared, but I think it's something from our stats the first time. And we talked to the folks at S and P that this is, this is a new thing they're doing. That previously, you know, you would not immediately go under, under a credit while after a natural disaster. But with the number of natural disasters going on around the country, around the world and incidents that, you know, this is something we got to keep in mind when, you know, when we talk about resilience. It's the community affairs, how quick we can get back. Cause they are, it's, it's interesting to watch them put these credit watches out in your banks, your financing and what your interest rate may be and how the financial stability of your community. So lessons learned and we passed the test the first time. We just got to make sure we keep doing the right things.
Will we be reassessed at all? Or is it like, once your label is stable, they don't put you back on unless there was something else?
There would have to be something else that would trigger their review. I do think they are going to continue to review the negative outlooks.
Okay.
So FEMA public assistance, we're going to spend some time, time here. So the FEMA process is archice and complex and time staking. And we're working through it diligently, but I want to give a high level overview and then we'll, we'll dive into what we're working with from a city perspective on our damages. Be requesting assistance from FEMA with the doesn't mean we'll get it, but we are trying to get as much as we can from the community. So on the category A and B side, this is emergency work. It addresses the immediate threat from the storm. It includes debris removal and emergency protect measures. So you can think of this as kind of our initial response. Our firefighters, our police, our public works, our water sewer in the field responding to the emergency. And that includes everybody from our administrative support staff as well. Just some quick overview on some of those numbers and these estimates at this point. We have gotten all of our category, first tranche of category A and B into our consultants, which is being submitted into FEMA. So where our target is to get this money back in before fiscal year this year. So it doesn't have a negative impact on the expenditures we have out from the storm. So from a labor perspective, we have about 14,000 hours that we've submitted to this point overtime and straight time work, depending on what it was. And it totals about $750,000 for labor expense. We do receive reimbursement on equipment we've used. So that's our next category is force account for equipment. We have, this is probably a low ballpark. We've got 19,000 hours of equipment usage. We're looking at about $150,000 in there. That again, we don't have the exact FEMA rates built in on that. And so we went with a low number. It'll likely be higher than that. And then lastly, cash flow out from invoices, contracts and purchase orders. We're about 1.75 million contracts and invoices. So in total, about $2.7 million in cash outflows outside of the equipment usage, which is just reimbursable for us as money comes back in. Any questions on the category A and B side? The debris, we'll talk a bit about management plan tomorrow for that. But we, the debris is going to continue for a much longer time than the category B items. So the process, so at the beginning, it's kind of applicant driven. We need to submit our request for public assistance. We have calls with FEMA and we schedule a recovery scoping meeting. That has all been done. Once you have that scoping meeting, you're supposed to submit your damage inventory within 60 days, which we did, but they did extend us the grace period to get other damage in there. I think for a total of 180 days. So if something comes up that we missed, we'll get it added to our damage inventory sheet. So that's where we are in the process. I love that, right? So that's where we are. So we're now working with FEMA to get the documentation done for our damages. We're having to prioritize how we go about this with FEMA because they have limited capacity to have site inspectors available, working with us and our consultant to see which projects we're submitting first. And so FEMA will conduct site inspections or they will do what's called a tabletop inspection. And this is a virtual inspection where they don't send someone on site. So we've done a lot of like from the front end where we have good estimates, good pictures, good things developed and we might have a better chance of getting a tabletop inspection where they say, hey, I see this. This looks reasonable, sign off and get into the reimbursement phase. So we're working through that right now with FEMA. We'll talk about the priorities running through our dashboard in a moment. And then ultimately it has to go to the CRC. I don't know the exact name for what that is. I can't remember. There's a lot of alphabets when you're working with FEMA and the federal government. But that is where they do the more thorough reviews of the projects and obligation issue of funding. And it will approve the final grant agreement terms. Once we have a final grant agreement in terms of place, I think that's great. However, it still has to come back. The money has flowed into the state and then be released to us. So we're trying to work very diligently to get reimbursed and get money back into the city. So we're going to talk about our damage assessment report and run you through a couple of different aspects of that. So I'm going to jump into it as well. Will has it over there as an additional support item. Let's see if that catches up. It does. And I'll let Jimmy kind of run us through the report here.
Sure. So like Brian said, we wanted to do as much legwork on the front end as possible. And so as you know, we love Power BI and so we built a dashboard with all of the projects. Right now, our total project count is 82 with a total cost of $173 million. Average cost per project is $2 million. And if we want to kind of go through a couple, we're going to start with category C, which is going to be roads, sidewalks and bridges. And we're going to start with 1110.
And what we're going to do is show you an sampling of the projects that are in each category just so you have an idea of kind of the damage we've been submitting to FEMA and the backup that we're submitting as well. So go ahead, Jimmy.
So each one of the projects in the dashboard, if we did get photos of the damage, they're included. Some of our engineers have done really good work. So we have some comprehensive engineer estimates in there and some cost benefit analysis as well. And the more detailed, the better it increases our likelihood for reimbursement. So here, Will has pulled up one of the engineer estimates. And that project totals $172,000 and that is that third up project.
So we just want to appreciate all the work that the engineering team has done. We have great staff that house and produce these types of things for us. And this is going to really accelerate our process with FEMA.
Next, we're going to move on to Tom's circle. We had a few different washout. And so starting at 58 Tom's circle, and we can open that engineer's estimate.
Thanks, Amy.
No, they're both.
They're all next to each other.
They're like right next to each other. So you can see the significant, sorry. You can see that there's pretty significant washout there. And I believe that the property owner has already stabilized that hill. And so has, has, have we started repair?
We have not started repairing any of these projects. A lot of these projects will have to wait until we get approval from FEMA before we can start moving on. So you'll see a lot of projects sitting with barricades and things like that for a while until we get FEMA approval to go forward.
And this project is going to total about $72,000 per engineer estimate. And then right down the street at 82, we also had some road damage and pretty significant mudslide, as you can see there. And again, like Brian said, we, we have to wait until the FEMA funds are coming before we can start to make repairs.
One thing I'll highlight on these projects is there's mitigation goals and levels that FEMA has that you're allowed to take advantage of on public assistance projects outside of the patent mitigation projects. And so their mitigation goals might be bringing things to standard, removing things from the floodplain or increasing capacity of the DMC. So they'll give us one free essential like upgrade of the pipe size, for example. Or they'll say, hey, you can remove that project from the floodplain and relocate it elsewhere. It's, they don't want to pay for something that's going to be damaged again. So they do support mitigation goals and then bringing to standard will be things like road widths, bridge widths, things like that. So if they've been damaged, we have an opportunity to somewhat upgrade some of these natural infrastructures that we have.
And I think looking at 82 Tom Park Circle really highlights how each project can differ significantly, right? So right down the street, we had a bit of a washout at $72,000. And here we are a quarter mile down the road with an estimated $331,000 contract. And that's really because it destabilized the roof. We also had some damage at the Patton Park Bridge. And this just really goes to show the amount of stuff, right? I mean, that garbage can is really shut down your network. And so we're getting that cleaned up. We need to make sure that that bridge is stable and safe. And then see if there's any hazard mitigation potential with that bridge as well.
So for most of these, we've identified damage and we need to go in with FEMA and say, hey, this has been damaged. We would really like to bring this to standard and work through their process to get the whole bridge replaced outside of just cleaning it up for small repairs.
And one, two more in category C, we have Britain Creek. And I think one thing to note, and we'll dive into this a little more, but with this dashboard, you can really see that floodplain overlay. And so when we get to the op center, you'll see just how much further the water went compared to that floodplain. So here we had a bit of washout with a bridge and also some debris that needs to be cleaned up. And I can't remember the total estimate on the bridge. 250,000?
That's not developed yet. From not an engineer's estimate at least.
No. Yeah, so we have the engineer estimates and then our department heads also went in and kind of did a ballpark based on their expertise. And so that's what you're seeing there for that total cost. And then we have 212 Chelsea Street.
It's just Chelsea Street, Will. Oh, this is okay.
And this is a culvert that we are going to try to get placed. And it was pretty damaged in the storm.
These are just some examples I wanted to show you of category C. This is going to be mostly your roads, your sidewalks, bridges, culverts. So if you look at the full map view on category C over here on the right, you'd see, you know, this is limited mostly to the city. It's mostly along the Wash Creek and our different tributaries. And it's mostly our smaller bridge, bridge structures. So that's what makes up this total supplemental. We're hoping based on the good work of our engineering department, that these ones will be much more eligible for tabletop reviews and hopefully we'll be getting this money in and spending them on the projects. And so the way that FEMA works is anything below, I'm going to say it's a million, but it's like a billion 62,500. Why they chose that number? But below that, it's a small project. Above that, it's a large project. For small projects, it's just a direct allocation of funding. So if we don't spend the whole amount of money to fix the sidewalk or the bridge or whatever, we get to keep the rest and use it for FEMA storm related type recovery. So these are good pots of money for us to go after. Just got to appreciate the engineering department for putting these together.
We want to move out of category C and into category E, which is going to be your pub buildings. And city operations is going to be our highlight here.
The jump to 13.
All the way to 13, Will. Page 13 down at bottom.
Oh, thank you.
And while Will's pulling those pictures, that Brian's got that floodplain here. And you can, you can just see how much further the water went. There was a lot of water.
Yeah, it was not just to the floodplain and the storm. That's going to impact a lot of things in our community, especially with debris and commercial businesses that are carrying insurance. If they weren't in the floodplain, they would have not had the required, that level of insurance like others were. So they might not have the, the money to pay care in the situation or come without a life. According to him, we'll get reimbursed from FEMA. We can pick it up. The other damages in category E, just give you a quick overview. City Hall had damage for trying to submit for our roof, you know, new roof cover for city hall. We did receive insurance to repair the stairwell and its bathroom downstairs. So we have money for city hall. We're trying to get more for the roof and a little more mitigation funding. PD had some roof damage as well. Fire station has some wear and tear, fire station two. And then the Sherwood ships had roof damage. So that's the, the public building category that we're submitting forth.
Moving out of category E and into category F, which is going to be our public utilities. We're really going to focus on the Mills River and French Broad intake and then the wastewater treatment plant.
You can see this is where the big money is. 125 million total cost with 26 projects. So that was our Mills River intake. I don't know when that actually was taken. Recollection of that.
That was on the 27th.
That was on the 27th. Okay.
And then the French Broad River.
And just to highlight the importance of these intakes and the reservoirs, you know, y'all's investment in the system. We were able to, you know, stay up while we weren't able to access the takes. 10 million gallons at the Urtill Ritz floor, which is enough to cover at least a day's usage of our water system. So while the water receded, we had, we were comfortable that we had water. That intake, so that's, I mean, how high up is that?
So I want to say that's about 12 feet up. It actually, that was taken before there's a game camera out there that the contractor has. And it went underwater eventually, but the water actually got 25 inches from that green thing as a generator. So that pad, it, the water got 25 inches above that.
And then moving on to the wastewater treatment plant, which again, $102 million estimate for repairs there.
This is our biggest project, one of our highest priority projects as well. We're working really hard on a lot of different angles for money for this. Luckily, our staff have done great master plan work and we have a project for the headworks of this facility, which is underwater in that picture. And we have plans that have actually already, have we released the design, Brent? Now are we close to, or those are?
The design is going to be on your March 6th, Jimmy.
So we're getting this project as close to as trouble ready as possible. This is a major aspect of our wastewater plant capacity and resiliency. And we'll be moving a lot of the function of this plant to higher ground. And it should qualify for FEMA reimbursement from that perspective. Anything you want to add, John? Which one of the plant?
Not on the plant, this specific plant, other than I want to talk in general is, you know, I talked about, we're focusing on recovery. And what I've tried to relate to the team is we really
And what I've tried to relate to the team is we really, recovery is at least another twelve months. I mean, going back to January first, really eighteen months, you know, expecting that we're going to be in recovery mode between now and at least June twenty twenty-six. But doesn't mean we're going to stop focusing on council strategic goals. It just means that we are going to try to intertwine them with recovery. Example, you know, we had already been talking about relocating the headworks and other things for this plant. And because of the storm, and we knew it was over a hundred million dollar project. So this may facilitate our ability to do it as part of the recovery. It's part of using FEMA. Or we've talked to the Economic Development Administration, EDA. We're looking at all parts of the country. Again, this is our largest. So again, recovery is where we're going to have to focus our capacity and our time. Because although our facilities and everything are fully operational and with the exception of the operations center, we, there's still work that has to be done to get us back to where we were pre-storms. So it's going to take a lot of, as you can see, a lot of staff time and a lot of, lot of effort and construction to do. So and you'll hear me talk more about that as we go through tonight and tomorrow. But if we have an opportunity to not only fully recover by moving and becoming more resilient with this project, it also helps us from an economic development standpoint, because we go from a capacity of four point eight to six point oh and position ourselves for the future, which is long, is always a goal that's counted.
And then moving out of category F and into G, which is going to be our parks and other. And as you know, Patent Park and the pool took on a lot of water and a lot of damage. And so we just want to give you kind of a brief overview. And so first we'll be looking at the damages sustained at the pool. And like Brian said, I think you guys are really going to dig into the pool and Patent Park as a whole tomorrow.
We did want to show you some of the pictures of the damage, since it's a couple of days after, that was our main hub for the pool. Subnet. So water line on one of our buildings. Ceiling caved into the bathrooms, winter break rain. You have the park. And I think it's supposed to show in the floodplain for our discussions with FEMA about potentially raising or moving out, make sure it doesn't happen again.
And then the Patent Park House, I think, shows a great example of the water line.
Is that, you know, the house on the left when you first go into the park? It's like, deck is probably at least six feet off the ground. That's another seven feet or so there.
And then to wrap out the projects that we're going to show you this evening, we're going to take a look at Whitmire. And again, rough estimate for Whitmire right now, it's at about twelve.
That's for a complete regional building, it's four and a dog square foot or square foot.
And again, the flood.
Thank you, Jenny. So if you notice, we didn't have any category D. Category D is a lot of facilities, like, so I don't have anything in that category. But we do have an extensive list stretching all the way out to the forest and down to Saluda. So we'll be working hard with FEMA to try to make sure we get as much of this repaired or reimbursed as possible. It's going to be a long process and I don't expect money to be coming quickly. So we will be pushing as hard as we can to get our high property projects funded. Any questions on the damage inventory that's been submitted?
Do you have the link to this?
Yeah.
I would tell you, this is, I mean, I mean, Brian said it, and I was like, this is first class. I mean, I, it being what we have prepared here, we hope if any common sense person looks at it, I mean, they've got everything they need. You know, right there, but so we hope that will facilitate moving to this quickly. Time will tell, but this, this between our GI, just the whole team, this first class.
Appreciate Will and Jenny, they worked really hard on the backend of building this. So thank you, Will. Thanks for coming tonight to show it all. Thanks, Jenny.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is all fantastic information, but what about like smaller towns that don't have the smart people and resources to do this stuff? Like, what, like, can we do to help them get resources together to try to get reimbursement? I know, like, there's already towns that are really struggling with reimbursement already. And like, are there resources available for them? I mean, I know that we're in a state of recovery ourselves and like, we don't have the bandwidth to do that, but like, what?
It's one thing I would add, you jumped that job, but you know.
Just being a black laborer.
There is a category C, which is administrative type costs. And so if you are a small community, you can hire staff that's reimbursable by FEMA to do temporary work for you like this, where you can hire consulting agencies. And that's all a hundred percent reimbursable and awesome.
That's what most, a number of them, particularly engineering firms in western North Carolina, have got folks dedicated to the marshals and spruce vines and try to help them get through the process.
So it's not just FEMA PA, FEMA PA is a huge part of it, but there's also a lot of other pots of money out there. And so hazard mitigation will start up, you know, shortly after FEMA PA is done. And it will be projects that are things like potentially a third fire station or a new debris cycle for the city. So purchasing these things are going to make us more resilient for the future. Where we just spent this morning talking through and prioritizing from a staff level, what we think those things might be. I'm going to share that with you tomorrow, let you all, you know, share your thoughts on where we should be headed. That's the organization from a mitigation standpoint and resiliency standpoint. There's South Mountain's mitigation plan that we're also working with a consultant to update. It's for, it's a regional plan, but that's specific things for communities. And then if you have identified these things in your plan, it makes you likely to have support for funding for certain mitigation projects. We're working on that update as well. There's a lot of alphabet type agencies out there from CDBG, DR money, that's going to be more housing focused to EDA, which is the Economic Development Administration, that's going to be supporting businesses and industry and USDA community facilities that might be more tailored for public service type facilities, like a fire station or a police substation or things like that. And then lastly, there are state and federal allocations and loans out there as well. I haven't seen any direct allocations as of yet in any sort of federal or state budget. I don't know if that will ever come. Also not seeing revenue replacement as an option yet. But we have received a few different loans. One that's been in two tranches on the water side, I'm wrong on that. But is it just one loan that has two different amounts or are we?
It's, it's going to be one large. Yeah, it's one loan, we've been approved for three million, Brian, we can add, we're going to add two. They, they have the funding capability to add two.
Okay. And so we're submitting for those loans. That's going to help us do these projects that we deem really critical, like the French Broad River intake, before we get FEMA commitments and money coming in. So these loans are going to help flow us through from a cash flow perspective. And we also have money, one point one million coming in from the state treasurer's office for the general governmental funds as well. So we do have loans coming in, which are great, but they do have to be paid back. So closing out, two more slides here for me and then we're out.
Oh, no.
Oh, Will. Turn the TV off. We're back.
You did it.
I said, put the remote away. We do want to, you know, as John mentioned, remind us of capacity to do projects. And so we're working on tracking, okay, what makes sense from a lean recovery perspective? We'll talk a lot about this tomorrow. How does that overlap with our existing priorities? And so a good example might be our floodplain ordinance. We know that's been important, it's in our list, it also impacts storm recovery. So we're going to work on things like that from a strategic plan overlap perspective. And then lastly, the general obligation bond process that we'll be talking about tomorrow. Tonight, I just want to give you a slide with just the legal requirements of a geo bond referendum. This is about six months to get it done. In reality, we probably want to look at a year to do it right. So we would have the projects identified, we'd have good information out about the projects before getting into the legal advertisements and public hearings and things you have to do leading into a November or March referendum. It's only available to do on a primary or general ballot, and that would be March and November of twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-eight. At this time, if you said go today, I think we'd have trouble getting March twenty-six completed in an effective manner.
Well, we can do November twenty-six.
We could, we could do November of twenty-six if we had, we had clear guidance in this budget process. There's a lot of strategy to go as well, so we'll talk more about that tomorrow. That's all I've got for lead updates, getting ready.
So I'm going to take you back to time for a lean. And we're going to review your FY twenty-four audit findings. So. So moving in just kind of starting conditions for FY twenty-four, it was a reval year. We adopted a three percent tolla. Our merit increases were one percent for achieves, two and a quarter for exceeds, and then three and a half were outstanding. Our retirement contribution for non-law enforcement employees was twelve point eight five percent. And for law enforcement, fourteen point one. And then we, we did have some changes to user charges and fees that we'll dive into in a bit. Come mid-year, we were starting to see some indicators that were a bit concerning. First, we saw a slowdown in sales tax revenue. And then we were also seeing some personnel expenditures that we wanted to pay attention to. Because of that, we went ahead and took some proactive steps. We put a general fund of capital projects freeze in place and a citywide hiring increase. Moving into revaluation, overall, it was a pretty good year. We did come in a bit lower than our surrounding communities. As you can see, Seventh Avenue had some challenges. And this was because we had a loss of business personal property. And we also had a for-profit business go to a nonprofit entity. Before I get started in the general fund, because we do have some new members with us, I will be comparing start of the year estimate to end of the year actual. This is a tool that has really two good uses. First, it can be used as a tool to build trust and confidence in the numbers that we give you. But also we use it as an indicator like sales tax and like personnel expenditures. If there is a big variance, we can dive in and see kind of what's going on. So diving into the general fund, we had an adopted tax rate of forty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of value. Our start of the year estimate for revenues sat at twenty-four point two million dollars. And we ended the year at twenty-five point three, it's about four point six percent over the estimated revenue. For applicable taxes, we came in at fourteen point nine million dollars. And sales tax actually told a really interesting story. So we adopted a budget of five point nine million dollars for local sales tax. Come mid-year, we ended up decreasing that to about five point seven eight. But we ended the year within one percent of our adopted level budget. And that really goes to show that because we do budget conservatively, even with those warning indicators, we came with a budget. Another thing that to pay attention to was kind of that year-over-year growth. That's really where you see this slowdown. So between FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, we had a year-over-year growth of twelve point three percent. And then twenty-three into twenty-four, it was six point two percent. So coming out of that COVID kind of rush, we really start to see that slowdown. However, for economic development, we came in strong. Permits and fees is one of the, yep. Where are all these numbers? Oh, sorry, there, I can, I can send you my notes.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We were trying to limit the amount of slides. For economic development, our permits and fees totaled six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. This includes fire inspection fees, donate permits, and payments in lieu of cyclones. Some other things, we had pay good capital or operating, sorry. Oh, no. So our beginning of the year estimate for expenditures is twenty, twenty-four point eight million. We came in at twenty-five point nine, about four percent, four point six percent overestimated expenditures. Personnel cost totaled fifteen point three million dollars. We did add six FTEs. We had a police officer that was stationed with Boys and Girls Club, was actually split fifty fifty. We added a business systems analyst, which was split half of the general fund and a half of the water sewer. We added a four FTE property maintenance crew, and then we added one traffic engineer. Another thing to note of importance with personnel is we saw the end to that safer grant. So we ended up taking on a hundred percent of personnel benefits for twelve firefighters. And then one of those indicators at mid-year that were concerning to us was overtime cost in the fire department. And so by mid-year, we were estimating that they would exceed their budget by two hundred thousand dollars in overtime. However, we took some proactive steps. We reduced the minimum staffing requirements from thirteen to ten per shift. And leadership in the fire department also started to lean more heavily on those part-time workers. And we actually came in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars under the requirement. So the difference in almost a million between the estimate and actuals, where are those numbers at? So we have those in our financial summary table, we can send that right down to you. Okay.
You want, I mean, so a lot of it is related to personnel cost, related to.
We knew that city area was in danger, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that was the overtime.
It was the overtime that, what kind of compounded the issue is we have a fairly young department. We had a number of individuals that went out on maternity leave and they were taking twelve weeks off. And so unlike other areas, like if I had a child, you could send me home and the team just picks up work, just picks up the work. And the fireside or, yeah, fireside or solid waste, we had to put a body on that fire truck, keep the fire truck running. So you had to bring it every time. And that, we saw a large, we had a number of folks on each shift that were out. So our, it was driving out overtime. That's, that's one reason, from the fire department side, that was the main reason on, from fire. Some of the other costs were just personnel costs increasing related to career ladders and moving people up as they got certifications and things that we underestimated. And then also, the one thing that really got us, well, not caught, the one thing that I think we identified too is we typically budget for a certain attrition rate, if I remember.
So, John, we pulled up a slide that we presented to council during our retreat in FY twenty-four. And at that time, what we provided was leading factors, including inflation. So not only on the, on the personnel side, but we had spikes in costs due to electricity. Chemical costs increased significantly.
But we, I'm sorry, but we used all that information when we projected our budget last year.
Now, this was, we brought this in because of the mid-year report. So as we're developing that budget.
So you did it at the retreat last year.
It was at the retreat last year. So we, we saw, so retreat last year, is that by twenty-four? And so we did our mid-year report before the retreat, as we kind of normally do. And we saw all these warning signs. And so during the retreat, we said, hey, look, we're doing these actions because we're worried about the current. And so during the retreat, we said, hey, look, we're doing these actions because we're worried about the current budget. So this same retreat we're talking about, we normally talk about the prior year, but we had brought in FY '24 current year budget because we had seen that mid-year troublesome numbers. And so we broke down the kind of delta between all of these from a year-to-year basis to show the council what these two are saying.
So we're still talking, really talking about the same.
Talking about the same thing.
It's the same, it's the same, but same 20, it's last year's, but it's not this year's, last year's, but.
Yep. So just to list off a few other items that you may be interested in. So like I said, utilities, chemicals, supplies, all saw increases. For example, our electricity budget, just in the general fund, was $250,000 in FY '22. But in FY '24, we had the increase that almost doubled it to $440,000. In FY '22, fuel, we spent general fund $262,000. By FY '24, we increased that almost 50% to $335,000. As John, Jenny, and Brian all mentioned, there were things related to wage growth. We implemented career ladders during that year. And we also had increases in benefits over time, things that we would have included in the budget, but also some unforeseen factors that occurred between adoption in June and mid-year amendments, which occurred in December.
Yeah, we're typically not that far off on our estimate for expenditures. To note, we're talking about estimate, not budgets, we weren't ever budget. We actually brought the budget because we were conservative, but we like to talk about estimate action. But we like to say, hey, we came in line with our estimate or not. And this is one of those rare years where our estimate was off. And so we, we pulled the lever, we threw the warning flag, and we said, hey, we're going to do a hiring freeze. And that gave us the capacity, again, the benefit of doing that, since that's actuals, gave us capacity to say, hey, we need to pull back on spending to get back in line. But yeah, the overtime was 200,000. You have at least 300,000 electricity and fuel there. Turnover and vacancy rates were down. And ultimately, that, so we did career ladders over two years. So we did last fiscal year and the current fiscal year we're in. And we really don't have a good projection methodology for where someone's going to land on a career ladder after it's implemented.
And you'll give us all that information at another time, or?
We can give it to you tonight.
I'd like that, thank you.
Sure.
Right, moving into operating, some of our highlights in the operating budget, where we did the comp plan, as I'm sure you all remember, that came out to about $150,000. And as Adam and Brian just hit on, we did see significant increases in utilities, specifically electricity. And the general fund ended at $474,000 for electricity expenditures last year. For capital, we did put that capital freeze in place at mid-year. However, prior to that, we did have some pay-go capital spending that totaled $256,000. This included the purchase of the parking lot down at the off-center, and we had some capital purchases in the police department and fire as well. We did want to note that we did do a vehicle and equipment loan that totaled $1.3 million. This doesn't fit in the general fund, this sits in 410, but we wanted to note it. And that included 13 vehicles and two large pieces of equipment, as well as self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. Our debt service for the fund came in at $4.2 million. This includes Fire Station One and Edwards Park debt service, as well as the City Hall and Operations renovation project. We also had sale of capital assets that totaled $512,000. This included two fire apparatus, and we made some ARP projects. That totaled $350,000. That went to Interface Assistant Ministries, Safe Flight, Children and Family Resource Center, and True Rich. So overall, the fund had an operating ratio of about negative 2%, with expenditures exceeding revenues by $522,000 there. You see that reflected in that fund balance appropriation. Personnel benefits made up 58% of expenditures. And while we did see that decrease in fund balance from about $11.6 million to just under $11.1, the fund balance remains healthy in the general fund.
Totally.
Any further questions for general fund? Moving on to our MSDs, I did want to note that for Main Street and Seventh, this was the first year that we had equalized tax rate of $0.21 per $100 of assessed value across both funds. So in Main Street, we had a beginning of the year estimate of just about $700,000 in revenue. We ended the year with $655,000. It's about a 6% under our estimated revenues. For Ad Valorem, we ended up with $302,000. It's about $1,500 off of the revised level budget. For sales tax, we ended the year with $312,000 in revenue. For expenditures, our beginning of the year estimate was $708,000. And the end of year actuals totaled 734, about 4% over the estimated expenditures. Personnel totaled $342,000 in the fund, and we did add two downtown workers, split 75% Main Street and 25% Seventh Avenue. And this was really an overhire. We've got that maintenance contract in Main Street or downtown that's getting ready to roll off in FY '25. So we wanted to overhire the two to do onboarding and some training before that contract. The downtown portion of that maintenance contract totaled $97,000. And we do have a pressure washing contract for $10,000 and a hanging baskets contract for '22, and that will remain in place, that will not go away once Bruce's contract expires.
When does it expire?
This year.
Yep.
Debt service in the fund totaled $45,000, and that was the service payment for the downtown restrooms. We did buy furniture for the new coworking space, and that totaled $25,000. And we did see a $78,000 decrease in the fund balance.
What were the revenues for the coworking space?
We have not, and like a working space, you know.
I'm going to be interested in that.
I think we're going to do it near the first storm that came. We're, we're working on hearing that back up. I think Jamie had a sought opening, I think she did. But we're working on getting the final kind of like protocols for how you preserve the space, how you lease the space, making sure the printers, various IT things are working. So just got a small tweaks left, that should be able to see.
Are we written part of it, though? Isn't the Lucy Agency in the front part there? They're in part of that. So part of the building is being leased, yeah, approved that contract. And the other thing we have to do is we better put a chair lift in for ADA before we can really go full bump to.
All right, moving on to Seventh Avenue. Just to remind you, our adopted tax rate was $0.21 per $100 of assessed value. And for revenues, our beginning of the year estimate totaled $133,000, and we came in at about $122,000. About 9% underestimated revenues. Our Ad Valorens totaled $55,000, and sales tax came in at $62,000. On the expenditure side, we had a beginning of the year estimate of $148,000 and ended the year with $120,000. It's about 18% under the estimated expenditures. Again, that 25% of the two downtown workers. Our operating budget totaled $23,000. This included a portion of that maintenance contract at $7,200. We did install some lighting down at the depot for $2,500. We had architectural design done for $36,000. We also transferred $81,000 out of Seventh Avenue into the streetscape project, and that is the driver of that fund balance appropriation. Moving into water sewer, our rate, we were just coming off that rate study, and we adopted an 11% increase for water and a 12% increase for sewer charges. Our beginning of the year estimate for revenues totaled $23.8 million. We ended the year at 25.2. As a reminder, even coming out of that with the 11% and 12% increase, we did bring on that lifeline tier, which is a discounted rate for the first 3,000 gallons of water per month for residential customers. We also brought the inside and outside rate differential down from 135% to 130, and we are still on target for equalization in FY '30. And it was the first year that we adopted a flat rate for commercial users at $5.01 for 1,000 gallons. And then we received direction on system development fees, which we actually adopted with the FY '25 budget. At 20, they went into effect at 25% just past January. They will be at 50% come July 1st, 2025, and then 100% by July 1st, 2026. Our water sales totaled $15.9 million, and our sewer charge revenue, 7.8. And then our new water and sewer taps totaled $587,000. On the expenditure side, our beginning of the year estimate was $22.8 million. We ended the year at $23.3 million, about 2% overestimated expenditures. Again, personnel is going to be our biggest driver there, coming in at just over $11 million. We did have some reclassifications, we added six, or six and a half FTEs. We had that half of business, business systems analyst. We added two customer service field representatives, one utility engineer, and one line maintenance crew with three FTEs. For operating, our operating expenditures totaled $7.2 million. Again, electricity was a big driver. We actually saw a $208,000 increase compared to FY '23, and that came to a total of just under $1.3 million. Line maintenance came in at $571,000. And then we had sledge management as well. I wanted to note, we were seeing cost increase in FY '22 coming in FY '23. Those costs did stabilize, and we ended the year at $712,000. Moving into capital, our pay-go capital totaled $627,000. New pump station improvements and plant improvements totaled $205,000. And then new line installation came to $327,000. Debt service in the fund came just up $4 million. This includes payment for the City Hall and Operations Center and also the FY, or the 2023 revenue bond. So we do see that fund balance in the water sewer fund increased. However, the main indicator to pay attention to in water sewer is going to be those bond rate covenants that lets us know that we're able to pay back our debt service. And we met both covenants, with covenant A coming in at 1.54% and B coming in at 1.5%.
The requirements for those are 1.0?
Yes.
One thing I want to highlight too, and I might need Brent's help here, the sledge management costs at 3/4 of a million dollars. Those would likely almost go to nothing once we have the file solids dryer on top, is that correct?
Yeah, there'll still be some water, water treatment, sledge.
Right.
Disposal costs, but the waste water will be significantly saved. So hopefully at some point, maybe we'll make some money.
And that product's under construction?
Yes, it's just officially under construction.
Awesome.
Moving to parking, favorite fund. We had no fee changes in FY '24. So our beginning of the year estimate for revenues came to $1.13 million, and we ended up the year just over $1 million at 1.1. Give you a breakdown of the parking revenues. So monthly permits totaled $207,000. The garage came to about $166,000. Meters totaled $687,000, and then fines and penalties totaled $43,000. Moving on to expenditures, our beginning of the year estimate was just over $1 million, and we ended out at 1.2. One thing to note is that software is the largest expenditure in the fund for $105,000. And then behind that is going to be credit card processing fees, total of $45,000. We did have a capital expenditure of $6,500, and that was for the installation of an electric vehicle parking station. And then debt service for the parking debt totaled $812,000. We did see a fund balance decrease of about $99,000, and there is a due to the general fund of that 515. Currently, the fund is not self-sustaining, and this is mainly due to the pressures of salary rating.
So to elaborate on that, some, our parking revenue estimates are pretty much spot on from the models we presented back in 2020. However, the growth in personnel costs far exceeded those estimates. If you think about just the cost we've got from health insurance coverages and our salary increases, at least 28% for two-year periods, that this fund is not prepared to handle that without additional rate increases. And we know we're not going to do additional rate increases in parking. And so essentially, we're planning that the general fund essentially covers this fund until we can get to a place we can evaluate either raising rates or paying down debt service. That number will decrease every year. We are seeing an increase in occupancy, though, over the past year. So we saw November and December were up over 10% each month.
Moving on to stormwater. We did have an increase in stormwater fees. They were increased to $6 a month for residential and for a flat fee, and then $6 a month for ERU for non-residential with a cap of $300. For stormwater fees, our revenues totaled 1.2 million, and stormwater permits came in at $2,000. And our beginning of the year estimate was 1.32, and we ended the year at 1.2. On the expenditure side, we had a beginning of the year estimate of 1.26 million, and we ended the year with 1.14. Our personnel costs, again, were the largest driver of expenditures in the fund, which totaled $812,000. This includes split with public work. We have property maintenance and ground crews in the fund. Our operating expenditures totaled $103,000, and those were for just general stormwater work. Capital expenditures were $146,000, and that was for stormwater infrastructure. And our debt service in the fund was for $84,000. We did see a decrease in fund balance of $62,000, which is due to the general fund, and we had transfers out of $153,000. We had $53,000 go to the Sullivan Parks Dream Bank Restoration Project, and then $100,000 go to the Golden Leaf Project at Lower Mud Creek. The, so the overall operating ratio for the fund was 8%, with revenues exceeding expenditures by $91,000. However, we did have those transfers out, and that's why we see that fund balance separation. And last but not least, I'll stop there in numbers that you know, environmental services. We did increase our user fees to $23 for 32-gallon service and $25 for 96-gallon. Our beginning of the year estimate for revenues was 1.84 million, and our actuals totaled 1.76. We. For residential, our revenue came in at $1.5 million. And then for the commercial service, we came in at $240,000. On the expenditure side of the house, our beginning of the year estimate was $177 million, and we came in at $1.71 million, about 3% under the estimated revenues. Our tipping fees totaled $225,000. Our tipping fees totaled $225,000 compared to $228 in FY23. And we did have some debt service for a waste truck and a brush truck that totaled $137,000. We had a sale of a capital asset for 7,900. It was a very old waste truck. And we did see an increase in fund balance of $58,000. However, due to the continued increase for salary and benefits, we are concerned about the future sustainability of the funds. And so we will actually be bringing some options to you at the April workshop meeting and then again at the budget workshop in May. So overall, FY24 was a healthy year for the state. However, there are considerations, especially as we move into FY26. And with that, I will pass favor to Adam to dive into economic and market.
And environmental services, the rate study that we did, how does that impact our expenses?
We'll bring in a full workshop presentation for April on the route study recommendations. So we've, I think the largest takeaway, and Brent and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the changes that we'll do will help sustain kind of our existing service level without needing new staff. It's not going to like save us money. It's just going to save us future needs, essentially. Does that make sense the way I put that, guys?
Well, that tells me that it does save money, because then you're not having to hire people.
Right, it's going to save us future dollars. And just a reminder, we do just like actual review on, and we get really deep into like the future budget development as we go. So you know, like we'll be coming to you throughout the budget process with a lot more information on what's coming next. So this is just hopefully foundational type information, just to give an idea of where we did at the last specific year.
More to that, Brian, the first step in formulating the next year budget is looking at the current economic trends. Obviously, we snipped a funny slide already. It's hard. I twisted my mustache, there was a queue, but sorry. So we start every budget process by looking at what's going on in the economy, because what's going on and getting a good prediction for what's happening next year leads into formulating a solid budget, providing you guys good estimates, and letting everybody know how we're going to spend our money and use it effectively without flying blindly and assuming that everything's going to stay consistent. So step one, do an economic update. And before we do that, the reminders are, I'm not an economist, I don't have PhD. And I'm not a financial advisor. I have a certified financial planner certificate. But regardless, I'm your Huckleberry. I'm the guy that gets to walk you through these things, and that's what we're going to do today. I'm going to start with a work area trade. And what that's going to do is give you guys a good understanding of what's going on in the Hendersonville job market. So, Brian. Yeah, we, he's ahead. This year, we felt it was important to give you guys a good understanding of what's going on with the city's workforce. So to accomplish that, we analyzed the data from the Census Bureau. They've gotten all the maps to me. We looked at every other year from 2012 to 2022, and got a good sense of where the major jobs have been within city limits. And as you may imagine, most of those jobs are concentrated in the downtown quarter and health facilities like Party and obviously Carolina Village, which counts as a health facility for census purposes. And then also Four Seasons Boulevard, where we have all of our major retail, a lot of food service, a lot of highway-type businesses. Our top sectors in the city, again, as you can imagine, our healthcare, that's our number one, followed by retail and food service. So what this indicates is that our economy is driven by tourism. That's evidenced in the retail and food services businesses. And also we have folks that say permanently that healthcare is indicative of dependent care and aging populations, so on. So, Brian, next slide, please. The data also gives us a little bit of information on changes over time in workforce age groups, earnings rates, job sectors, so on and so forth. I think my big takeaway is here, reviewing the data. Brian, if you want to, just go ahead and go to the next slide. Are that we experienced higher job growth, obviously, as one would hope from 2012 to 2022. So added about 400 jobs during that 10-year period. Also during that period, the earnings of all of our worker classes increased. So in 2012, only 24% of workers that were employed within the Hendersonville city limits were earning $3,334 or more a month. However, by 2022, 42% of workers were earning that wage. We began, sorry, go ahead.
Does that wage come from a specific, like, AMI numbers?
There isn't an AMI number. It's just the census chose that.
That number?
Yeah. I don't like to report on that category.
Okay.
Yeah, they also didn't adjust that for inflation.
Okay.
That's the other factor we're going to get to. But inflation certainly played a piece in that change. We became slightly more diverse, although not much more so. Just looking at the major groups, we had 91% white population, 6% black or African-American population, 1% Asian, and then 2% all other. But in 2022, that shifted a little bit. So our white demographic workers decreased. Our African-American workers and our Asian background workers increased by 2% and 1% respectively. We also retained similar sectors. So although that's not exciting news, we are relatively consistent in who is a key people in the city. So healthcare is still a major employer. Retail, food service, tourism are all things that are major drivers of our economy along with things like professional services and construction is becoming larger. So that's the profile. Are there any questions about that before we move on?
And with our workforce race analysis, do you think we'll probably see a decrease in support African-Americans and maybe open risk people?
I think if you ask an economist what is going to happen with demographics in North Carolina and across the US in the next 10 to 20 years, they would say that there's going to be a blend of those racial groups, and we're going to see more growth of the lower ends, where we represented that two or category mixed. I think that category is going to grow, and you're going to see the other singular categories decrease slightly.
And that would probably be due to a lot of variation?
Yes, yes. Job market out of the way, we also wanted to provide some more specifics on Halleen and how that affected employment in Henderson County and the region as a whole. So we're very lucky in that the NC Department of Commerce has a Labor and Economic Analysis Division, which they have built up an ego and called the LEAD Team. So the LEAD Team, on a regular basis, looks at all of the data that the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Bureau of Economic Analysis, a lot of federal data agencies compile, and they focus it on North Carolina. So if you don't trust them, you can go to their data sources, and you can do this research yourself. I actually fact-checked a couple of things and expanded on some of the tidbits that they provided us. But their takeaways from Halleen were that all of western North Carolina, so all of those blue counties in the bottom-rate image, they all experienced a growth in unemployment. So more people lost their jobs during the Halleen in those blue counties. And if you'll notice, Buncombe County specifically is colored very dark blue, meaning that they lost the greatest number of jobs specifically due to Halleen. So from 2023 October to 2024, Buncombe County went from the lowest unemployment rate county in the state to the highest the same period next year. And the reason I'm looking at year to year is the data isn't, it isn't reflective, it isn't easy to look at it from a seasonal adjustment perspective because of flavors that come in and out for different types of seasonal work. Snowboarding, skiing in the winter, summer camps, other tourism activities in summer. So the best indicator is looking at that from year A to year B. And I think just the takeaway here is that unemployment was a very hot issue in October of 2024 for Buncombe County. And that means for the region as a whole, it was also an issue. And I'm focusing on Buncombe County because it's a major employment hub for the region. It's where most folks in surrounding counties go to work. And just for you all's knowledge, we're focused on this because unemployment rates don't reflect where workers are. They, where they are working, excuse me, they reflect where they live. So Buncombe County, obviously, you don't have to commute very far out. That means their unemployment rate is high. However, Buncombe County's job losses also impact surrounding counties. So looking at the top five commuting counties to Buncombe, we've got Madison, Henderson, Haywood, McDowell, and Yancey. Focusing on Henderson County, about 28.8% of folks that live in Henderson County enter of working age, commute into Buncombe County, rely on Buncombe County income to support their lifestyle. So if Buncombe County's job market is slowly recovering, folks in our county might also be slowly recovering. But the good news, trying not to speak lullaby noon, but it's a little bit hard in the natural disaster. The good news is western North Carolina's recovery has more closely resembled the recovery of the Wilmington area as they saw in Hurricane Florence in 2018 rather than what New Orleans saw from Hurricane Katrina in 2025. Sorry, 2005, it's not 2025. I'm not trying to jinx New Orleans. So while our market has dipped considerably, the data is showing signs of resilience. Following our high unemployment in October, our numbers are showing that we're gradually and consistently improving. In Henderson County, the numbers aren't quite as drastic. We had unemployment of about 3% in October of 2023. And again, looking at that year-over-year, that grew to 5%. So we saw about a 2% growth in unemployment due to the hurricane. The most recent data we have is November and December. We don't have January yet, but that shows decreases in unemployment. So we're returning that to a more normalized unemployment rate. So in summary, Buncombe County was hit hard. That has hit some of the folks who live in Henderson County and rely on those jobs. However, labor market-wise, we were fortunate. Right now, we're looking at a 3.6% unemployment rate, which is actually in line, or if you want to be precise, under the current North Carolina state average unemployment of 3.8%. Because of our resilience of, you know, the things we've done, we've maintained a favorable credit rating. We've spurred the recovery of our labor market in Henderson County by maintaining our water system, by restoring government, by continuing service through the natural disaster. And that's truly helped our business economy and also our consumer economy. So all of this led to SMP, like Brian mentioned, setting our credit rating to the same way state. Yes.
Do we know, so like with Katrina, they lost like 50% of their population, moved away and didn't return. Do we have any like estimates of if this area or region was impacted? I mean, obviously not on that scale, but do we know any population numbers or any changes?
Population numbers, I don't have any. I think the best data that we could look at as an indicator would be researching apartment vacancies, researching housing turnover. I think things of that nature are probably the best indicator of immigration, emigration, right? So if you want, we can look at those, and we can bring you that data at the main workshop.
Okay.
Jill, when does the state put out their population numbers for us every year? May?
I think it's May.
So we'll have an updated population number in May.
In March.
Yeah, it's in probably about by the time, right? Because I use it for distribution purposes.
And so moving away from the job market just a little bit to a related item, but it's something that we're all very familiar with, inflation. Inflation is something that we typically measure by the Consumer Price Index or the core PCE, which is the Fed's preferred measure of inflation. That one lasts a little bit, they mirror each other, there's very little difference. So I'm going to go to the CPI for the best part. But looking at the CPI data available through the Bureau of Labor Statistics in their 2024 in review article, we can see that for the majority of all expenditure groups, inflation increased year-over-year. So all three groups went way up. And John Connet expected a full report on why eggs are increasing. I think the biggest factor of that is ADM flu. I'll leave it at that, but you'll notice eggs are huge.
That's crazy.
Yeah, they're a staple rate, so everybody buys eggs and they're way up. So that's why everybody watches eggs. But also important, prices for energy have decreased. That's mostly related to trade policy. Oil, gas prices have decreased. Energy in general has decreased. So again, that's tied to fuel. The cost for motor vehicles, as many of us have experienced, have increased. During the COVID era, there was a lack of chips, which led to a lack of new vehicles, which led to an increased wear and tear on used vehicle, which now means there are fewer used vehicles and the prices are remaining sticky. So vehicles aren't losing value as long as they're reliable and used.
I think, was it in 2020 when Brian did that presentation of like the two cars in the car lot?
Yeah.
It was so bizarre.
Yeah.
It just like still stands out to me. Like when I drive past it now, I'm like, oh, there's cars there now. And it's like, normal, it's full.
So you have pre-COVID, a brand-new, just go with the Toyota Camry, it could have cost you like $20,000 bucks. It's probably going to run you somewhere between 30 and 40, depending on what bells in Western school. And so that also impacts used vehicle. Used vehicles changing hands. Other items, so not as important because they're a luxury item, but flights and airline costs have decreased. That's probably not good with everything that's going on with the airline industry at the moment. I wouldn't take any discount flights, be safe out there if you do. And as we know, costs for medical care have diminished significantly in the last year. We're going to get a little bit into that when we get into the compensation benefit slides. But overall, CPI year-over-year, summer '23 to December '24 has increased 2.89%. So baseline, that's what we're looking to provide as cost of the adjustment. And I have a little bit more information. I do want to provide a look at the core PCE. So local example, at one of our businesses, I wiped out their logo with my usual duck, but they had a 10% charge on any items they were selling. But they had a ten percent charge on any items they were selling that contained an egg. And then related, I wanted to provide a chart that shows it shows, excuse me, it shows the change in consumer savings versus spending over time. So from June to December of two thousand and twenty-four, how those two items have changed and then what that does to the overall spending and the saving in the economy. So that black line is indicative of a decrease in consumer savings economy wide. So people have less money in their savings, they're less likely to spend. Hopefully that pulls off prices, but it's too early to see where that's going to go.
Do we have a different graph than the one?
We do.
Okay.
You do. Yeah, I changed that. Oh, so that PC, the PC, you know, the the PCE slide was essentially showing the same thing. I was trying to get at with PC with the CBI, so I just swapped it out and saw that it was a little more useful. So our prediction is Brian's right. I'm over time. In FY twenty-six, we expect COVID recovery to continue. Due to some increased spending related to recovery, we expect sources like sales tax to flourish in short. Notice that I say short run, not long run. Money's coming into the community. It's not going to come and be made forever for construction, rehabilitation, so on and so forth. Our expectation was mostly evidenced by a record sales tax in November, reflecting November sales. So this was reported this month. It reflected sales in November because the state lags behind us. But we had a six hundred and twelve thousand dollar sales tax collection, which was record setting. Moreover, with our unemployment rate regressing to normal levels, we expect our labor market is going to be more influenced by national trends, less by the hurricane next year. So looking at the national trends on inflation, the Fed has already reduced their expected rate cuts for two thousand and twenty-five. We think inflation is largely going to depend on the current presidential administration's fiscal policy, which means the choices they make and how to alter government spending and tax policies, which includes tariffs, which are being used as a tool to negotiate and reshape trade with other countries. So certain tariffs, if implemented, could harm the U.S. I think if you ask an economist, the one that we heard at Blue Ridge Community College about a week ago, said, if you want to be an economist, you have to swear on the Bible that tariffs are bad. And I think the sentiment is the same across anybody who's taken an international trade, of course, tariffs are bad. But he did say that certain industries such as manufacturing could benefit overall from those tariffs. And I would argue that that's that's probably the case, but we've got to be cautious about a reduction in free trade because it ultimately does lead to inflation. So on our side locally and in the budget development process, what this means is we've got to keep our eye on the rising price of goods and services, the unskilled labor supply. So as we see some of these policies unfold, it could become harder to find folks from outside the community who commute in for work, to work on apple farms, to work in our manufacturing businesses, so on and so. And if that happens, what 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 we're going to see is that wages have to increase to attract those folks, which means we also have to increase ours to remain competitive in the job markets. And that's the economic.
If if tomorrow does occur, will we have information on how that impacted big sales?
So sales tax data is always going to be black. It's going to be more months. We'll we'll know we'll know this month's sales tax collection in June. June. So it's going to be the the last period of the card this year.
This may occur in almost every five months.
Yeah.
So it's four months.
More months. Thank you. Stay good. Trying to try to keep on course. I'm going to take you through compensation benefits, which I think we've got a little more time on. And we have allocated a little more time to this because it is your number two as a board strategic prior. So we're going to start with cost of living adjustment. We'll go into performance base, merit pay, talk about other benefits like the 401K match, paid family leave, short term leave, health insurance, the retirement system, and then we'll wrap it up. Thought it was a little important to start with some histories. And we've we've been talking about a living wage. Teddy Roosevelt thought it was pretty important back in nineteen twelve. I'm going to read that whole speech. Take my word for it. Read it if you want. But at at the time that we completed the last paying class study, which was started in calendar year two thousand and twenty-two, completed on budget adoption, FY twenty-three, the board directed staff to maintain a living wage of sixteen eighty-eight an hour, which was in alignment with MIT's measured living wage at the time. Since then, as I've alluded to, our living wage has inflated. So we're now at twenty-two sixty-one an hour, just to keep in line with what MIT is recommending. But we don't look at just one source. We look at multiple. So every year, just like last year, we checked three different sources. We checked MIT, we checked a couple others. And they provided similarly high numbers and shocking numbers at the same point last year. This year, those numbers average out to twenty-four dollars and seven cents an hour. So our our current living wage is eighteen seventy-eight an hour. And what we're representing with that is a grade nine employee who's finished their probationary completion period and is working two thousand eighty hours annually. The the reason I specify that is because we have multiple staff working different schedules. For example, police officers work twenty-one eighty-four hours annually. Firefighters work twenty-seven fifty-six annually. So although their annual earnings might be higher or the same as comparable staff, if you apply their usual hours, it it waters down their hourly rate. So what we're focused on is the regular employee, what they're taking home annually, which comes out to about thirty-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars. If we want to increase this to the number that I just mentioned, that twenty-four dollars and seventy cents an hour next year, we'd be providing a twenty-eight point two percent cost of living adjustment, which, as you can imagine, is not financially sustainable. So to bridge the gap between the current wage and the living wage that we just reviewed, we're recommending a new solution, which is to do the living wage and then provide a certain percentage catch up until we close the current rate versus the living wage rate. Brian, if you want to go to the next slide. And and what this slide shows is just just what I was talking about where certain employees work different hours, leading to different hourly rates. So you can see that eighteen ninety-four, which is just the grade minimum, so you would have to inflate that five percent for example, an admin assistant in grade nine would bring home thirty-nine thousand and four hundred and three dollars a year. A firefighter without completing probationary completion would bring in fifty thousand two ninety dollars a year in FY twenty-six. And finally, a police officer would bring home fifty-two thousand eight hundred and four. So the, sorry, I forgot about that.
Sorry.
The 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 point the point of this being, our first responders are over that living wage requirement. But if you are more concerned with their hourly wage, they actually appear to be up. No. So what we're showing here is the current wage times inflation. So for next year, two point eight nine percent plus a three percent catch up rate all the way forecasted out through FY thirty-four, that just shows that gap closing year over year. So it assumes that inflation is going to remain constant at two percent per year. It's not. There's going to be adjustments in this. But the big picture is, over time, if we take this approach, we can reasonably expect that in year eight, we'll be able to achieve a living wage unless there's more hyperinflation and more external factors in the job market that we just can't keep pace with. So next slide.
So I'm going to bring our employees up above poverty now because that's the biggest factor.
Yeah, that that'll bring us to the living wage as it was defined, the lax pay classification study.
I need three dots.
Yep. And and just as a reminder, I I think I wrote it as a footnote on these slides. We're defining a living wage as a single adult with zero dependents, you know, city provided healthcare, living in just a studio apartment. So this isn't, you know, some person that's, you know, adopted eighteen children, as I can imagine. This is very, very base level assumptions on living wage. But the slide.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
What is the minimum grade? Is it, do they all are one?
The the lowest grade we slot employees in is grade nine.
Okay.
Yep. So this slide, similar to the last one, just wanted to show if we increase that catch up rate about one percent, we'd be achieving living wage by about FY thirty-one instead of thirty-three. Provided a bunch of different ifs on the right. If if anybody wants to figure out where we've reached our living wage, but ultimately, after you get to five or six percent, it's pretty difficult on that year.
But none of our current rates are below poverty or from where we start.
Yeah. So I I think it's dependent on who defines the poverty wage, but I I was
Ten thousand, right? And then for each additional person in the family, it's like five thousand, six hundred?
Yeah. So a a single person definitely would be, I think, depends on a few things, who's defining the poverty rate, how many payments they have, what their healthcare expenditures are. But right now, nominally, no, nobody's getting paid a poverty wage. Finally, just wanted to show you guys what it would take to cover the recommended plan using the value increase and assessed value for each year. So went ahead and calculated that out. If we move forward with the CPI plus three percent assumption, you can see that the cost in just salary alone in the general fund increases between six hundred and fifty all the way to seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in FY thirty-three. And if we wanted to cover that by growth in assessed value, our assessed value would have to grow on average about three point seven percent per year. Right now, without reval, we're averaging between two and two and a half percent.
And those numbers there do not actually include reval?
Those don't. So yeah, the point in that that last slide there is an FY twenty-eight will have a reval year and then an FY thirty-two will have a reval. Assuming those are favorable, if we want to recapture a portion of that revaluation period and apply it to this goal, that that's a good.
So like your previous slide where you have kind of this like upward trend? And then if you did use the reval year to edge out each one, then it would take you potentially less time to get there? Or would that be the goal?
Yeah, that'd be right.
Okay.
Realistic way to change. And one thing I just wanted to really comment, because this affects all the funds, right? And our smaller rate paying funds and the MSDs have a lot harder time catching up to these increases. Our being stormwater sanitation, mainstream seven, where it's water and sewer in the general fund. We're we're pushing this to the majority of our workforce, but when we do this, we give it to everybody. And so our rate paying funds are having trouble keeping.
And so we we start with cost of living adjustment because it's the most universal. It impacts every single city employee regardless of how they do. If they're if they're here, they get cost of living, right? The the next most universal item that everybody gets based on their performance each year is their merit based increase. So the merit based program, we redeveloped that following some pay classification study recommendations. In FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, the HR team began collecting various representatives from each department and did a full comprehensive review and overhaul of current performance based pay system at the time. So that committee accomplished a few things. They, one, moved from a paper based performance review system, which was a little archaic, and moved that online to our financial and personnel platform that we're able. They also refined areas in which employees are evaluated. So employees are able to pick which criteria are most applicable to their jobs because not every analyst or every environmental services worker, for example, is going to be should be graded on the same criteria. They're not doing the same job. They're different things that indicate their level of professionalism and production, right? So the other thing it accomplished was changing the performance rating system. So initially, we had achieved, succeeds, and outstanding. And now the recommended verbiage is proficient, impressive, and exceptional. Finally, this this overhaul advocated for the advancement of the differential between each tier in the performance rating system. So FY twenty-three, before we started this journey, we were looking at a one percent jump for every step up the ladder. You were doing better than maybe you had to prior. So if you were achieving, you got a one percent. Now it's if you were proficient, you got a one percent. If you get an impressive, you were getting two percent. And if you're a top tier, best employee ever, you're getting an exceptional three percent. Well, over time, what we decided to do through the committee's feedback was advance that, make it more impactful. And what what we recommend in FY twenty-six, after doing a brief pause in FY twenty-five to get all this implemented, is get back on track, change the differential to one point seven five percent between those three tiers, eventually ending in FY twenty-seven with one, three, and five as the different performance facing performance opportunities. Questions on performance based pay? Another very important benefit is the 401K match. So it's absolutely critical to encourage employees to save sufficient funds for a happy retirement down the road. And it was funny in our FY twenty-three pay class study findings that we should implement this program. So we did enact a two percent match. Our current match is at two percent. And this covers all general class, non-enforce, non-law enforcement employees. That non-law enforcement part is important, and I'll get to that in a second. But currently, of the general class employees, a hundred and seventy-nine of our three hundred and forty or so employees are participating. But currently of the general class employees, a hundred and seventy nine of our three hundred and forty or so employees are participating in a 401K match of some sort. Uh, some employees choose the pre-tax option, some choose the after tax Roth option. And, um, some, you know, participate on a dollar basis, some participate on a percentage basis. But all have chosen, uh, to give a little bit of their paycheck, uh, and invest it through their retirement. Of our employees who participate in the percentage based program, um, the average contribution is four point six five percent. Which is a good indicator that a large number of our staff are financially responsible and they're thinking about their futures. So, next slide, please.
People contribute four point five, six percent on average to the two percent match?
Yes.
Wow, you're so responsible.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're, we're capped. But, you know, I, for, I, for example, I'm, I think contributing now eight percent by seven percent. Some people choose more, some people choose less, but the max match regardless of how much you contribute to yourself. So.
Do you have the dashboard thing where you can toggle on yours?
Yeah, it's through Empower and it'll show you what you'll have in savings by the time you get to retirement. Yep. And you can, again, if, if you want the match, I don't think I clarified this for the meeting council members. So if you want the match, you have to participate on a percentage basis. That's on us requirement, that's a retirement Empower system requirement for one reason. So to support our responsible employees and attract new ones, um, have an edge up on the workforce. We recommend that we continue to increase this. And what we'd like to do is just go up the one percent in FY twenty six to a three percent match. And in, in a vacuum, if we assume similar participation rates, um, this recommendation would, would result in a cost increase of about seventy five thousand dollars. Majority of that being in the general fund, which will be hit with an additional forty thousand dollar costs. And then the water sewer fund with an additional twenty six thousand dollars costs. But as Brian and John just mentioned, it's important to note that there is a cost impact on the other funds and we will have to be prepared if needed to adjust. I mentioned law enforcement officers and, I feel like every time I give this presentation, one of them asks, like, if we're doing away with the law enforcement contribution, we're not. Um, we're required by statute to give a five percent contribution to all law enforcement officers, uh, through their 401K peripery. We're not doing away with that, we can't do away with that. Everybody's getting five percent if you're a sworn law enforcement officer. And no, you don't have to match that, you're just getting it from the city because that's what we were required. So this program right now is truly focused on getting a comparable benefit available for all other. And then paid family leave, um, we recommend no change to paid family leave or short, short term leave benefits in FY twenty six. Um, I will note, these have been really well received by staff and honestly life changing for a lot of them. Uh, I didn't provide any survey data this go around. However, last year we did provide some qualitative data, um, about the staff experiences with, with the program. And how it enabled them to either continue working with the city or really focus on family, which was the higher priority at the moment. So.
Do we have the budget impact for twenty twenty four?
We don't yet, we just got the actual numbers last week, but we can find out the cost impact. So in twenty four, they said no cost impact yet, but we had seventeen cases of the use for a total of eighty two weeks of paid family leave used. And then short term disability leave, we had seven uses for a total of thirty nine weeks of use. So far in twenty twenty five, you can see those numbers along with the expectation, uh, towards the bottom of that table. On average, we're, we're using about a hundred and eleven weeks per year in paid family leave and about sixty eight weeks per year in short term. Again, it's still early, but we expect that those numbers will creep back up. Health insurance is a little tricky this year, to say the least. So, so not only are health insurance costs increasing, uh, but, you know, each year we, we meet with our insurance providers to understand what increases can be expected next year. Pausing on twenty six, I do want to say in twenty five, what we accomplished was eliminating the MUR, we moved to Etna. And, uh, we did have a few high claimants. These factors in partnership with the rise in costs of healthcare nationwide and especially North Carolina, which is the number one, uh, healthcare expenditure state in the nation, according to Forbes. Have led to, uh, believing municipalities' decision to close their health benefits trust. So, uh, we were just alerted to that on Monday this week. I don't have a lot of extra information on it. But what the change means is we will, as a city, be changing insurance providers or at least bidding it out, um, to, to different providers with the help of our insurance brokers. So potentially new health, dental, life and short term disability benefits for all city staff. And any two or eight questions you may have on that.
How many years have we been with Etna?
This is.
Let's start it.
Yeah.
And then, um. I had another question, come back to me.
Then we'll be sure of a large discussion with the council at your workshops or, um, going forward on the health insurance. It's with, with the, with the idea of the trust going away and bidding it out now. It'd be an in-depth conversation as we go through, but.
We started the bidding process early, started in January, actually before the closure of the plan. So we already saw the, the numbers and we knew we needed to bid, see if we could something better. So that was good that we started that. We have a meeting next week, I believe, I think Jennifer's there, March third, maybe. And we're talking, uh, potential results of the bids, so we'll have more information coming.
Do you have a reference on how you bid or are you bidding out to like all the major insurance carriers?
Major carriers, we're bidding the existing plan. As for anything, there's opportunities for changes and we will be discussing that. Trade officer benefits, higher rates.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll talk at all of that.
And we are not self insured.
Correct. We're at that threshold, we don't have money, we don't want to insure ourselves, yeah, just, we would be bleeding money. Yeah, if we were self insured right now.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Where, where, the last two, yeah.
So what, what I'm going to say about elders is.
Keep going.
There's a policy document that requires that we pay this, it's going out next year. We've included that in our assumptions for next year. It's not looking good, hopefully it gets corrected. And then we've got the, uh, you've got the childcare, summer childcare, so, uh.
One thing on retirement is, you know, it has gone up, but there's a new pressure. And how they approach the retirement system may change, which may work to our benefit, but to.
We have provided research and past on childcare options. Due to how tight we expect that budget seems to be, we don't recommend the inclusion of childcare. There are some options, rates highest, lowest and risk and cost, bigger consideration, we have more data.
And this is partnership dedicated seats, what does that mean?
Uh, so we would work with an outside, uh, childcare provider and they would, uh, guarantee a certain number of seats. Vacancies for city employees with children access.
Have we, I don't see up there now, but partnering with some of the largest employers in Henderson County? Or, because I thought we had talked about doing that, the county, public school system?
I think that is reflected, um, in some of these. So the outside owned with a city funded provider, I think some of the partnerships would kind of lay in that free or four category. Where the city and the county or the city in another town, whoever it is, would, would get together and put a pot of money towards that provider, doing the services.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like we actually talked to the other major.
No, we have not pursued it because we don't have money to pursue this, to be frank. Unless council were to say, we want you to do this now, we're into the big question for us. But they're done.
Yep, and I think the other folks are in the same boat we are, you know, I will have conversations with John Mitchell and Tom, Tom, everybody.
Thanks.
Has talked about it, but no one has, has moved on to anything.
So we've, we've wrapped up all of the recommendations for the, on the slide. Just to recap real quick, cost of living adjustment, as of right now, five point eight nine percent recommendation. Let's increase the merit differential to one point seven five percent, increase the 401K program from two percent match to three percent match. Keep law enforcement at five percent contribution. No change in paid family leave or short term leave. For now, we're assuming a twenty percent increase in our insurance, our health insurance costs, excuse me. And then we've programmed it on the assumptions for the retirement system. And finally, we've got, um, Mr. Collins prioritization of all benefits.
Probably quick with the next slide.
Can you just go back a second to the other one, sir? So what is the actual budget impact to these recommendations?
We don't have a dollar on all of them. Like I said, yeah, a lot, a lot of these, we just found out this week. But going into your workshop will be preparation budget and providing you with a cost of what it takes to change each of those programs.
And if we get a next slide, I'll, I'll say the rest of your question. So all these have big financial or have, will have a financial cost. So we give you to me, Adam's had a good job of kind of laying things out. And I wanted to slide on here just so you know that these are my priorities, there's only so much money. And so from a prioritization, you know, what I want to focus on, this is priority level for me, I'm gonna, you know, work on the living, living wages first. Protecting everybody's retirement is, is second, health insurance. Third, 401K increases, paid family leave increases and adding childcare. So if I have only a certain amount of money, I'm going to start from the top and I'm going to fund until I have to stop one through seven, if that makes sense. These are my priorities. If you think I need to look at it differently, but I felt like the living wage was first, protect, you know, our retirement is the number one benefit of being a local government employee. Health insurance, which is critical, and then 401K, performance evaluations. Um, okay, so that's, that's how I'm going to approach it as I bring you a recommended budget.
Do you, you know, the average age ranges of city staffs?
We can get that pretty easily. We don't have it on us.
Curious about demographics for family leave and childcare? Yeah.
We can dig into that, anything else from data that you want on that?
After the age. Yeah, I think, I don't know, feels, uh, yeah, it feels efficient to make a guess.
I do know in the past, when we have had this in like a dashboard, when we've gotten much younger as a workforce.
Yeah.
One thing I'll just add is Adam has a draft, uh, of all directions to kind of look at Hendersonville specific for living wage. Adam has drafted what that would look like from a policy perspective for Hendersonville revenue to other economic firms. It's now more rosy, um, but it's, it's in there, so if you want to look at it.
It's going to be other than living wage.
I delivered it to people.
So wrapping, wrapping this up and getting us out of here, uh, so key discussions that will be coming up for you all, uh, our March workshop, we'll be talking about special events management. Uh, how we continue that, uh, we'll have a DFI housing presentation at March as well. April workshop will be focused on public services with street and PCI score and study. Uh, in addition to our solid waste study implementation plan, so we're going to ask for direction on that as well. Every Friday in April is a reminder, you will get memos, just spoon feeding all the detailed breakdowns of financials. I will also be including the updates on the health benefits bid. Uh, we'll have an April parks input meeting, uh, for the pool and Woodmire, and then we'll have our workshop on May second. And just to close this session, um, going into tomorrow, you know, that's a lot of information that Adam and Jenny provided, really good information. We're going to start talking about, you know, how do we recover from, from the storm? And going back to the French Broad Hustler, uh, Library of Congress, cool newspaper articles that Al provided a nice pamphlet of for you all. They, the theme was very optimistic. It talks about Hendersonville's optimistic spirit and it talks about that being kind of the hallmark of the post flood period. Some of the things we were doing four or five months after the flood in nineteen sixteen is we were doing damage assessments of jump off mountain water pipes. Uh, and we're discussing taking out new loans, so things that we're doing today at the same time period. Uh, also in the news, I found there was a lot of discussions of regulations on damage instruction and flooding. A lot of talk about resilience of the city and her willingness to help her neighbors. There was influx in passenger cars and tourists and the relocation of industry and a building boom in Hendersonville at the time. There was actually a chair factory that left Asheville and moved to Hendersonville and that's seen fifteen thousand dollars at the time. Uh, we have these stories kind of clipped out. And my favorite one was Hendersonville shines through a simple doom. I was going to have to read this. He was not available and when they said that Mayor Brooks was out in his bras rebuilding the streets, I was going to pull up this motherfucker, sure, very old, concerning to some people. Since, yeah, since he is not here with us, uh, I'm not going to mention him. So, uh, what we'd ask you then to think about for tomorrow, what, what do you want your hallmark to be in the post flood period here with the league? So, uh, think about that tonight and, and we'll be talking about that and talking about your cover stories, uh, tomorrow.
And the cover story will be at the end of the day, is that right?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll leave on a positive note at the end of the day. And we'll start the day with theme building, go through the day in some detail and feedback and direction from council and then we'll end the day with a little bit of that. Send you out a hat on, into those.